I'd like to call this December 3rd session of the Zion City Council Meeting to order. Clerk, 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 please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Burtner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
Item number four, Agenda Changes. Commissioners, do we have any agenda changes? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So move.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number five, Citizens' Comments. As we make the comments, Chief Henderson is bringing us up the list. Just remember, citizen comments are limited to three minutes during that time, whatever presentation you have to make. We won't answer questions during that time, but if there are questions that we can't answer, we will do so later in the departmental commentary portion of the city council meeting. Julia Patterson, 3307 M U S.
Good evening, you all. As you know, the city inspector did call DCFS. I just received a certified letter from the judge stating that it was unfounded, so I'm just asking if the city have any type of funding where they can help me. I have a water bill coming up at the end of the month, Christmas, as well as two of my children's birthday is in December, at the end of December. I'm not demanding anything, I'm just coming as respectful and humble just to ask if there's any funding that could help me because I normally will be working, and that's all.
Right, okay, thank you. And I'll address that right now. That's the township portion of the city that handles those kind of requests. The Township Office is on 27th and?
Eelam.
In Eelam, thank you very much. Get those "E" s mixed up. Sherri Neal is the town supervisor, and if you'll call them tomorrow, they'll be able to assist you.
Okay, I did, but okay.
May I may ask, Ms. Patterson, what dollar amount ballpark are we talking about?
Any day.
Okay.
Rick Delisle?
Good evening, your honor.
Good evening, Mr. Alderman.
I work primarily at 2501 and 2701 Deborah. That's the old Warwick Building, or I call it the Lace Factory. And 2501 is, used to be where the Leaves of Healing were printed when the city was founded. Not a lot of people go down there because it's mostly businesses. There's a lot of traffic during the day, but not a lot of the residents are down there other than to work. And the streets, and I know the city is going through some hard financial times, the streets, and I brought an exhibit here, I'd like to pass it out. May I approach the bench?
Absolutely.
You'll see from the photos that some of that damage is probably beyond patch repair and probably is more of a capital repair. And I imagine your upcoming budgets will be put together in the next 30 to 60 days for the 2020 year. And I'm begging the city to consider doing some patching down there and maybe opening some of the storm drains because the street is flooding and with heavy truck traffic, when the water migrates under the pavement, the substrate gets soft and then the loading deteriorates the pavement. So I appeal to you to consider funding us. In the short run, we'd like some, just pothole patching. And if you need to get ahold of me, my phone number is in front of both buildings, and I'll be glad to walk any of you through the Deborah Avenue patches, repairs. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item number six, Consent Agenda?
Approval of minutes of regular meeting held on November 19th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Bills vouchers 1-335-90 through 1-337-45 drawn on Huntington National Bank in a total
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda? I will second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number seven, Consider Passing Resolutions as Follows Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. Finally got that one. For assistance to correct code violations, improve facades, and establish small business development programs per Administrator Bronson.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. On November 6th, 2019, the Lake County Community Development Office announced availability of grant funding to assist local governments, public agencies, public housing authorities, not-for-profits, and for-profit entities to help ensure decent affordable housing, provide services to the most vulnerable in Lake County communities, and to create jobs through the expansion and retention of businesses. The funding activities outlined in the attached grant will assist commercial property and/or business owners located in the city's business districts that serve low-to-moderate income persons, address deteriorating facades, correct code violations, provide or improve accessibility for persons with disabilities, and provide small business development assistance in the form of loans, grants, or other direct financial assistance to pay for the costs associated with the expansion of a factory or commercial business, or the establishment of a new facility or business. Staff is seeking approval to apply to the Lake County Community Development Block Grant Program to develop small business development programs to encourage new business and address deteriorating facades, correct code violations, provide or improve accessibilities for persons with disabilities within the city.
Is there a motion? So, is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Is this grant in connection with the project that Beverly Mall is running?
No, sir.
Okay. So this is just the CBD grant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And my question is, is this grant available for existing businesses as well as new businesses?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments, discussion?
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number eight, Discussion, Authorization, and Approval. Eight A, Tabulation of Bids, HVAC, Annual Maintenance Service for City Hall, Police Administration, Fire Station 1 and 2, and Public Works, per Director Iyantin. Director Iyantin is not here this evening.
Mayor, he has asked that I step in, if you will, in his absence.
Commissioner Holmes will make this presentation.
The council, Director Iyantin, as I mentioned, has asked that I step in in this matter regarding bid opening HVAC annual maintenance. And he says the city received one bid for the 2020 HVAC annual maintenance for City Hall, Police Administration, Public Works, and Fire Station 1 and 2. The response of bidder is listed, Northern Weathermakers, Inc., for the amount of $16,899. Staff is recommending the responsible bidder be approved.
Make a motion that we approve the maintenance agreement?
I second that.
Is there discussion? I know they've done workforce before and their work has been impeccable, so.
That's correct.
Yes, all right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Sorry, Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item eight B, Request Permission to Read Advertise for Bids for the City Facility Cleaning Maintenance Services, per Director Iyantin via Commissioner Holmes.
And again, the item eight B, Director Iyantin said request permission to re-advertise, as you said, for bids for city facility cleaning maintenance services. But the motion that I would ask the council is to reject all bids and re-advertise for city facilities cleaning and maintenance services based upon recommendation, recommended specifications and parameters.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Mr. Chair, this is the recommendation of building Director Iyantin. It is based upon the application of Section 4-5-11, the Annual Municipal Code, which requires us to set out for procurement based upon the specifications of the applicable commissioner and department head in this case. So legally, this is the best course of action for the grant that has been given. Thank you, Commissioner, for making that.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item eight C, Tabulation of Bids, Water Distribution System Leak Detection Survey, per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Actually, at this time, we would like to request this to be tabled for the next meeting. We had a company contact us and express that they had sent in a bid that we had not received, so we need some time to kind of research that.
Make that motion to table this until when?
We'll shoot for the next meeting, the 17th. I think that gives us plenty of time to take a look at it to see if we actually received it or not.
Make the motion to table till the 17th.
I'll second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item eight D, Request Permission to Fill Four Patrol Officer Vacancies and Request the Names of the Next Four Qualified Candidates from the Police and Fire Commission Eligibility List, per Chief Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, you have in front of you a memo requesting the hiring of four new officers. As you're well aware, the department has been down nine officers this past year through combination of one military deployment, several retirements, a couple of medical disabilities, and one sudden resignation of a young officer who left for another community. We have currently one new officer in his field training program, two new officers in police academy training, and we are now looking to fill out our rolls to 46 more officers with the hiring of these four new officers. The Zion Board of Fire and Police Commissioners did give their approval to put forth those names pending the council's approval.
Make the motion to fill the four patrol officer vacancies and request the next four names.
Second.
All right. Is there discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item eight E, Letter of Support for Community Development Block Grant Application for Beverly Mall for Administrator Nabel. And our Economic Development Director, Sonny Leiter-Bronson, is going to fill in for Administrator Nabel this evening?
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor and commissioners. Ms. Beverly Mall is planning to submit an application for funding to the Lake County Community Development Block Grant Program. She is seeking assistance in demolishing the building within the city of Zion to build a center to provide educational and after-school programs. As this project is still coming together, and should Ms. Mall be successful in obtaining grant funding for her project, more details will be forthcoming. Staff believes that Ms. Mall's concept is well-suited for our community and respectfully requests the council's authorization to submit the letter of support to the Lake County Community Development Block Grant Program on behalf of Ms. Beverly Mall.
Make a motion?
I'll second.
Discussion?
So I wanted to ask a question in terms of, but Director Iyantin is not here to answer it. In terms of the demolition of the building, I wonder if that was already on the chopping block?
At this time, it is not.
Okay. And I also wanted to say, I had the pleasure of serving on the library board with Beverly Mall. She's the utmost professional and very classy, and I recommend submitting the letter of support.
Yeah, just like to express thanks to Beverly Mall for this initiative, not only, this is one of many, actually, and kind of an ongoing one, an idea that you've had, and I wish you all the success in completing it.
Just my two cents about it. That area, that building has been vacant for 30 years, maybe 30-plus years. And I know what the, I've seen the plans for the building, you've presented that to our pre-development crew, and I know without question that once that building is built and established, we wish you the best with that, that it's going to really change that area and what that area looks like, and the people that are in the townhomes, the Hebron Townhomes on 27th Street, that are, they're in the process of renovating those apartments as well, that it's really going to make a big difference in the area, as well as the services that are provided. So, thank you for your efforts.
Do we vote already?
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number nine, Departmental Commentary. Human Resources Director Karen Gray.
Thank you. I do have a comment.
Okay. Director Iyantin feel better? Director Robertson, you're next on the hook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to make a announcement, as far as the reef program, it will be ending tomorrow. They will be doing Friday's pickup, and it's the last of the fourth of the pickup. They spent last Friday and Saturday working catching up through the whole program.
And will they go throughout the city, or there are specific areas in the cities that?
It's just Friday's pickup.
Just Friday's pickup?
Right.
Okay.
So they're basically three days behind schedule. So they finish Thursdays today, Friday is the last day of the week's pickups.
So was it expected that they do each block four times, sort of four pickups?
Well, it's, if they're out there. They did, they went through four times. If the leaves were out there, they picked them up. I think there was a little bit of confusion when I said four pickups. But I apologize for that. But it's four weeks of pickup. So if they didn't have it, or they couldn't pick it up because cars were parked in it, then you had to wait for the following week.
Chief Lewis?
In keeping with my holiday themes of fire safety, we've been doing, we're now into that Christmas season officially now, it's December, so those of you that are going for the real Christmas trees, just remember to keep them watered often, and daily is better because once they become dry, they ignite very quickly. So with that, keep them away from heat sources. If you have those holiday candles burning, blow them out before you go to bed, before you leave the home. If you're cooking on the stove, all those desserts and fancy stuff, don't leave the kitchen while you're cooking. So, and other than that, keep your eyes out. We always, it's a theme in the fire service called keep the wreath red. So almost every fire station has a wreath out front with red bulbs. And whenever there's a fire due to some type of holiday decoration, you replace one red bulb with a white bulb. So, knock on what might be wood somewhere in here. You know, in the last few years, we've been able to keep ours red throughout the season, so we should be getting that out pretty soon.
Thank you, Chief Lewis. Chief Henderson?
I do have a question for Chief Lewis first. Did we have any turkey food?
We did not. We did not. That's, the safety messages work.
It's working.
And I enjoyed my deep-fried turkeys.
Safely.
Yes.
Just to break some of the council members' nail, this last 10 days, two weeks, officers had an opportunity to do some, it's called MEGET training, it's a terrible acronym, and I won't bore you with it, but it's really shoot, don't shoot decision-making that our officers go through, and it's a simulator where they're in front of a movie screen with live actors acting out a scenario, and they're giving, given a Glock gun with a barrel replaced with a laser, has a CO2 cartridge, it actually simulates the cycling of the weapon and the recoil, and they're presented a scenario that requires the officer not to only shoot accurately, but to make good decisions. It's not just important to be accurate, it's equally as important to make a good decision when to shoot and when not to shoot. And so we've been doing that probably the last 10 years. The state of Illinois, through the Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board, provides that to us one time a year through our local training agency, and so we bring that up here. These machines run anywhere from several hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars. So we're quite fortunate to be able to have access to this free of charge from the state. I was able to have five of our community advisory committee members go through it, one of which is Beverly Mall. That group exists to help the community understand the police officers, and the police officers understand the community. And so I think it was, it was enlightening, it was fun to watch a couple of high schoolers go through it, and some of their reactions, and it's just designed to help them understand both the training we do and the job that we do. But I just want to stress that we do take advantage of that, and we do train our officers to a standard that's expected in modern-day policing.
Thank you. Chief Henderson, is there the Shop with a Cop program, is that this week?
That is, that will be on Saturday. Kids will be showing up at 8:00 AM at the Zion Walmart, and we have 27 kids from both the Zion School District and Beach Park School District, 3rd Eagle School, that will be showing up and shopping with police officers.
That's a terrific program, getting engaged and involved with our youth and our citizens. Also, I'd like to take the opportunity, I received a call last week from Andrea Danks with the North Shore Gas Company, who is making a contribution to the Shop with the Cop program. And there's so many things that we are able to do because of community involvement and community sponsors. And North Shore Gas Company met Andrea Danks at church last year during the campaign, and she said she hadn't had an opportunity to meet the current mayor at that time, Mayor Hill. And I introduced her to Al, she said they didn't have much interaction with the city of Zion, and they would like to, so we're working on some programs and some, having some discussions about things that they can do to help our citizens as we get into the winter months. So, looking forward to the Shop with a Cop program. Commissioners, do we have anything, starting with Commissioner McDowell? You've got to talk about the Santa House.
No. Okay, yeah.
Please do, I think that's really important, that Santa came to town last week. I was supposed to play Santa, but the real Santa showed up with Mrs. Claus, so I was able to escort them in a 1926 fire truck by the, by the fire department. We had a police escort from Station 1 over here to the Shiloh House, and I think it's a great event for Zion, something that's been missing, so.
Yeah, all right, well, as you know, several months ago, the council donated the old Santa House that had been sitting in the city yards for at least a decade, I think, to the Shiloh House, to the Historical Society, and we moved that house there. Gibby was on scene filming the whole thing. We had a contractor that does a lot of work here locally, Ken Erickson, pour the pad for us and do all landscaping and all the work necessary to get that house up and running. And, yeah, just this last week, like you said, Mayor, we had Santa come to town. It's been a long time since Santa's been in town, and he's back, and every, this weekend, or these weekends up to Christmas, I think it's like 5:30 to 8:00, Santa will be there in that house on Friday and Saturday, and then Sunday, I think after 1:00, Santa will be there.
Let's make sure we all show up and sit on his knee and tell him we need some money here. Yeah. Yeah, this event, and part of this event, the reason this happened, community involvement again is so essential in our community. And this started from people talking about it on the Facebook page, things that have happened in Zion in the past that were great community events. And I know as, I was out campaigning, a lot of people were talking about events that could make Zion feel like the Zion that we all know and love. And so with the help of the Zion Historical Society, City Hall, and so many other people, this was able to happen. So, great event, I want everybody to stop out, and the kids stop out, and with their parents, and visit, visit Santa Claus. Mr. Fryerson?
No comments today.
All right. Commissioner Fisher, over.
We're winding down the year, we've got one meeting to go before the end of the year, and hopefully we'll see some of you folks come back for the next meeting. I believe, if I'm correct, we're going to have the public hearing on the levy for the next fiscal year, so those who are interested, please keep an eye on the schedule because that will be at the next meeting on the 17th.
I don't have any comments specifics to the building department, but I just wanted to put in one of your announcements that, as a reminder, City Administrator talked about the Zion City Solutions.
Yes.
That next one is coming up, December 10th.
All right. And that's at 7:00, and it's all good.
And it's all good.
My commentary was, Chief Henderson mentioned the MEGET training, and Commissioner Fryerson and I did go over and participate, and I'm a big, I love law enforcement shows, Law and Order, Ain't Blue Blood, you name it. It's really interesting going through the training and understanding how well our officers are prepared and what they have to be prepared for when they go on the most simple call. Give you an indication, many years ago, the Oklahoma City bombing, the suspect was caught on a standard police dock. And so while we, sometimes incidents happen with our first responders, our police officers, sometimes our public, and we're quick to judge their reactions, and I would encourage anyone that could take part in this kind of training, news reporters, some of our citizens were able to do it, you would have an entirely different perspective of what it feels like to be in uniform and to have to respond to a situation without knowing what you're going into. I talked to Chief Henderson about this, kudos to everything that all of our first responders do, Chief Lewis, Chief Henderson, our paramedics, so many times what they do and how they respond, they're taking life-saving measures. And we can't thank you enough for the risk that you have to endure day in and day out. So, the training was terrific, I was fortunate enough that I, I didn't get shot at, but there was an incident that happened that was so startling, all I could do was stand there with my mouth open and realize that when the police officers are going through this, they have to react, and they have to react the right way. They have to react, period, they have to react the right way, or they're in repercussion. So, thanks for allowing us that opportunity to go through the training and get a look at what you're doing through your eyes instead of the armchair quarterbacks. Item number 10 is announcements, December 10th, as we said, Zion, is it the Zion Solutions meeting? Is that at It's All Good, or is that Dave's?
Right, that is the Administrator Nabel's dollars and cents.
Administrators Nabel's dollars and cents, December 10th, at It's All Good at 7:00. Very valuable.
6:00.
Okay, I'm still on daylight savings time. Sorry, 6:00 PM, at It's All Good, right behind us. It's very important that our citizens go out there and listen to what we're trying to do financially with the city, the constraints that we have, things that we're trying to do to live within our means, which we've done over the last done over the last decade. Administrator Nabel does a terrific job of explaining the day-to-day of what he does and how we all support one another with the different departments. December seventeenth at six fifteen P.M., we have the Zion Town Board Meeting. At seven P.M. on December seventeenth, the Zion City Council Meeting, December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, December thirty-first, and January first, city offices are closed for the holidays, and January seventh, the start of twenty-twenty, we'll have the Zion City Council Meeting at seven P.M. on January seventh. Item number eleven, is there a motion toward your honor? A motion, second. All in favor? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. And one last item, Mr. Delisle, I know you had sent me this email, and I had forwarded on to Commissioner McDowell, as well as to our Director of Public Works, Ray Roberts.
Thank you, Your Honor.
So I don't know if I had responded to you in that email, but I just wanted you to know that we're looking at all of the areas in town and trying to do what we can to, within our budget, to get things straightened out. So thank you.